Welcome everyone to the 2024 Independent School District 518 School Board Debate. Thank you all for coming. I know you all have lots you could be doing tonight, but it's important to come out and hear these folks and support democracy and what we're trying to get done. My name is Mike Wool. I'll be the moderator. I want to start off by thanking the Government Affairs Committee of Forward Worthington for hosting tonight. We'll go ahead and list our debaters, our candidates. So Steve Schneider, Darla Agard, Eric Parrish, Kristin Willarias, Ann Mills, and Matt Woodboom. It takes a significant commitment to throw your name into any elected official position. So let's start off by giving them a round of applause for participating in the arena. So we'll have a two-minute opening comments followed by questions. That'll be two minutes. I encourage the candidates to be briefer if you want to, in the interest of time and six candidates, and then we'll end with one minute at the end. So Mr. Schneider, Steve Schneider first.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Is this on?
Should be.
Okay. As Mike said, I'm Steve Schneider. I am originally from Worthington. I graduated from high school, the junior college at that time, which is now the community college. I attended the University of Minnesota, worked in a couple of jobs, Blue Earth County and Meeker County as a county engineer, and came back to Worthington. Spent the last greatest part of my career, 38 years here in Worthington as a public works director. I'm currently working part-time with the city of Worthington as their engineer emeritus, helping mentor the new engineers in the office. I've been on the school board for 27 years at this point. I've enjoyed every minute of being able to serve the public and the school district in the education of our children, and I hope that you will support me in another four years. Thank you.
All right. I'm Darla Agard. It's nice to meet you all and see you all here tonight. I'm running for school board because I believe in the transformative power of education. Growing up in Worthington, I had the best education. I had teachers who invested in me. They gave me their time and their resources, and they really laid the foundation for my career and my educational objectives. So now I'm an empty nester, and I have a remote career. So I've taken the opportunity to move to my hometown, and I'm really eager to give back to the community that shaped me. My professional background includes experience as an executive leader in a Fortune 500 company, and I've spent over two decades working in the education technology industry. So I bring every day to my daytime job strong collaboration, negotiation, and critical thinking skills, and I'm hoping I can bring that to the board as well. There's a couple things from a campaign perspective. Number one, I think we need to focus on creating a better relationship between our community and our schools. I recognize the importance of engaging with and listening to the diverse voices of our students, our staff, and our community. I am committed to making informed decisions and making decisions that reflect the best interests of our entire school community. I also believe in fiscal transparency. Every student should be front and center of our financial decisions here in this district. What you'll learn about me tonight is that I'm super passionate about education. I want a district that everyone can be proud of, a place where we can send our students to school where we want to send them to school, and a place where we also want to work. So I appreciate you all coming here. Thank you for moderating. Thank you for hosting, and I look forward to the discussion.
Turn the volume up, Mike.
Okay, so maybe they both have to be on. I'm sorry, guys. Hopefully you could hear their comments.
My bad. All right. Desi says she heard me.
Go ahead, Eric. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Parrish, and I would also like to express my thanks for hosting this event and to the other candidates up here. It does take courage to file for office, and I appreciate your willingness to serve. I have lived in Worthington for 17 years. I've just started my 18th year teaching at Minnesota West Community and Technical College. I grew up on a family farm over by Metford, Minnesota, if you know where that is, the smallest town in the United States with McDonald's. And from that, I learned how to work hard with my father and my grandfather, who were running his acreage. My father was also a teacher for 36 years, and my mother was a teacher. My brother started out as a teacher, and I swore up and down I would never become a teacher because that job is hard. And here we are. My main reason for running for school board is something that's kind of personal in that as a former employee of District 518, I worked with students in the musical and the fall play directing those, and I really saw how great our students are and how great our school can be. And I really think that we're doing a lot of things well, but we can do more things better. I too believe in fiscal transparency, accountability, and we really need to rebuild trust with our school and with our board and to be able to move forward to address the needs of our school and our teachers and our community. I first put my name in the hat to be on the school board when Brad Schaefer stepped down from his role, and I am proud to do it again.
My name is Kristin Willarias, and although I have not lived in Worthington as long as some of the other candidates, I've lived in this area, and I have served in the schools in this area for over 10 years. I was a substitute for many years and absolutely fell in love with the district. And I fell in love with the diversity of the kiddos. And I call them kiddos, but some of them are 18. But I fell in love with that diversity and beautifulness of the classrooms that include that diversity. And I love teaching. I love being in the classroom. And, you know, I have a story similar to a lot of other people. I come from a long line of teachers. My grandma and my mom were both teachers. My dad was a teacher for about a year. But I love teaching, and I'm passionate about making sure that teachers have what they need to be successful in the classroom because our students are counting on that. Our students are counting on our teachers being able to have what they need to be successful. And our students need the teachers behind them and that they know that they can do anything. And to be able to have the teachers that are giving them the skills that they need to be successful for our community. And so a strong school board builds that community, that communication between the community and the teachers and the students because it's all important. Every piece of that is important, not just one aspect of that. And so that's why I'm running.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ann Mills. I'd like to, like many of the other people, thank you for hosting and Mike for you to moderate tonight. I appreciate being here and being able to talk to all of you. I moved to Worthington in 2009 with my husband, and we moved here to take jobs at Minnesota West. I have been an educator for my entire career. I graduated from the University of Minnesota-Morris with a degree in biology, education. And I immediately started to work in education and have been in public education nearly my entire career. I have spent a few years in private education, but I've taught everything from sixth grade up through university-level courses. I spent five years teaching here in District 518, so I know that side of being working within the district. I served on the school board for two years previously, and when I left Worthington to move with my husband to Kansas, I had to step down from that position. I am passionate about public education, both in teaching public education and in advocating for public education and the best thing that we can offer for students of the district. My kids graduated from Worthington. I did not. I grew up on a farm, so I'm familiar with rural communities. And yeah, I'm licensed to teach in five states, and I hope that you'll consider voting for me because I'd be thrilled to be back on the board.
Thank you, Ann. Thank you for being here this evening. It's important to see community engagement for individuals running and for participation to be in an event like this, to be engaged face-to-face, to ask your questions, and hopefully you receive an answer as we go through those this evening. My name is Matt Woodboom. 1993 graduate of Worthington High School, went to Worthington Community College, and graduated from SDSU in Brookings. Coach Jack Rapids. Our freshman is a recent graduate from Worthington High School. Wesley is a freshman at SDSU. My wife Teresa and I have four kids. We raise corn, beans, cattle, and kids on our third-generation farm just outside of Worthington. After graduation of SDSU, I came back to farm with my parents. I also started working at the radio station, KWOA, where I worked for 30 years in different capacities, and have enjoyed that ability to be involved in the community and learn more about our school from that news standpoint. I've served at the State Slayman Grower Association Director for 10 years. I volunteered to be on our Nobles County Corn and Bean Grower Board, the Rock Nobles Cattlemen Association. I've had been a past chairman of United Way and King Turkey Day. I have a passion to be involved with our community. I was a commissioner for eight years serving Nobles County. I started as a Worthington Township Supervisor and filled in the vacant role as a school board member two years ago, and was elected a year ago, and look forward to serving two more terms as a District 518 School Board Member. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We're going to start off. Darla Agard, you got the first question. We did receive a lot of questions, great questions up here, and in interest of getting to as many as possible and in giving the candidates all an opportunity to respond, we'll try to keep the answers to one minute, I think. Is that fair to try? We were talking two earlier, but we'll try to keep it going here. So Darla, you're first. In August, ISD 518 residents voted on a referendum that asked the community to financially support classroom additions, expanding cafeteria, maintenance improvements to the high school. The current school board has committed 18.5 million in existing school funds towards high school projects, but needed to leverage an additional 15 million through the referendum to be able to afford the proposed projects. The referendum failed. What should the school board do now?
All right. So a little bit disadvantaged because I'm not aware of what happened in committees and that sort of thing. But so I'm going off a little bit of a blank slate here. But the thing that I would want to focus on is prioritization. I'd want to know if we did a space utilization study because that would show us the hotspots and the needs for what we need to do from a school-building perspective. I think this is all about prioritization. I went to the school board meetings. I asked questions about that. I'd like to see a granular list of what is being done and what the costs are so that we can really figure out how to allocate our resources and do it wisely. There's got to be some other options. I don't know if we've looked at portable classrooms. I don't know if we've looked at scheduling changes, but there are different opportunities that I think we should look at in order to make this work. I think where the school and the community have broken down a little bit, we're going to have a problem getting a referendum to pass. So I think from a fiscal perspective, we're going to have to build in increments, and we're going to have to stretch this out a little ways.
Thank you. Eric Parrish.
When I talk to individuals in this community about the referendum and why it failed so badly, it's very obvious that there is a big distrust in the school and the board and what that proposal was doing. There was dollars in that that were undesignedated, and many people have come to me and said, "How can we vote for something if we don't know what we're getting?" Now, we need space. We need to renovate that kitchen at the high school from the 1950s. We need to fix that security point at the high school for the entrance and entrance. Absolutely, we need to do that, but it only starts by rebuilding a relationship with our community, and that starts with talking to people and listening to people. And if we don't do that, we are going to continue to have failed referendum after failed referendum as we have for the past 15 years, 17 years that I've been here.
Kristin.
So I think that the first step definitely needs to be communication with the community and what do you feel the problem is? Why are you not for the referendum? What is wrong? And find out what's actually going on first before we try and push through. Because we know that we need the renovations. We know that we need the space. And I was at a couple of the board meetings where there were some community members, but there was like not very many people there. And so we're not getting a good group of people from the community that are telling us, "This is what's wrong. This is what we have a problem with," so that we can actually address that, so that we can address some of those kinds of things. And then the other side of that is figuring out some of those out-of-box things, out-of-box ways that we can fix the space issue temporarily and then move forward from there.
Ann.
So like my counterparts up here, I think communication is key. I think it's always key in whatever we're trying to do. We need to be transparent so people know what it is that we're trying to do. Space is an issue. It's been an issue for as long as I've been here. Before I was on the board, I was out in the community trying to encourage people to build something because we knew space was going to be an issue. We knew it in 2009 when I moved here, and it hasn't gone away. So we need to keep building on that. Yes, we need to talk to the community and see what they're willing to support, and certainly we can consider other options to mitigate the overcrowdedness at the high school. But I ultimately think we have to do something. We can't just not address the issue. There isn't enough space for the number of students that we serve.
Matt.
There's approximately 1,200 students at the high school in grades nine through 12. The cafeteria, the space that our staff function in, was designed for 600 or so students. We have at least on a yearly basis, six teachers that don't have a classroom. They're moving about on curts throughout our school. We continuously struggle with retention and confidence in relationship with our students and our teachers, and we aren't able to welcome them with the space. They can put up their bulletin board, and they can be proud of and share that this is their space. That, to me, is a priority, and it was with the whole concept of adding on. And there were so many other items that needed to be addressed. It appeared to be the right approach to get it all done now because the only thing that's going to happen, it will cost more going in the future. But we have to listen to what the taxpayers said. They resoundingly told us, "You have to reevaluate the way you want to do it." And that has to start with listening sessions with our students, our administrators, and let them help us make the roadmap to use the dollars we have to do the best with what we have.
Steve.
I feel the next step would be to, for the board to have a work session, which is being planned. We would look at the funding we do have available and the items that we can get accomplished with that, and then we'd move on to finding a way to meet the other needs that we have within our district. The intent with the school board was not to do it all in one time. The bond, obviously, was to address all the issues, but we realized too, from a scheduling standpoint, we're going to have to do it in phases. So first thing probably do is take a look at the money we have, what can we accomplish with what we have at this point, get that scheduled, and then we'll plan for the future in cooperation with our community, with our staff, with anybody else that's interested, to explain to them why we're doing this and why we think it's necessary, and the advantages of doing it now compared to doing it later regarding costs. So I think in the long run and stuff, we will be moving ahead with something. It's just a question of how much can we afford now and how much will we be doing later when the community supports something to be done.
Can I interrupt just a second? That microphone is really low. That game can be product. We need a lot more. Yeah, thank you. We'll see what we can do, and we can pass mine. If this one's, I think, better, correct? Okay, we'll see if we can pass this one. Okay, a little closer. Steve, can you try it quick for us? Just say something.
We can try it like this. Is that better?
Not much better.
This better?
Yeah, okay, we'll try passing this one, and I can use that one. Let me read this question. This time, we're starting with Eric Parrish. Current superintendent of ISD 518 has formally announced that he's planning to retire at the end of the school year. Should the existing school board select the next superintendent before the board transition on January 1, or should candidates elected on November 4 be able to participate in this discussion and selection? Please provide reasoning.
I think it's important that we understand that this timeline was set up by a visitor from the state this week, that the appropriate timeline to do the search process would be starting in October and work through January, February, and March. That is what's been recommended to us, and I concur with that assessment. As someone who has served on several search committees at Minnesota West, including our current provost, that process takes time, it is complicated, and it really needs to not be rushed, and we need to make sure that we are doing a good job so that the community feels confident that a decision, a good decision, was made.
All right. Kristin Willarias.
So whoever is elected in November is going to be involved with working with the new superintendent. And so if we've got people leaving the board that are making the decision all by themselves, then it creates a little bit of a weird situation. And I have been in some of those kind of situations where I've been around and somebody else came in, and then it was like, "What's going on?" But at the same time, I would agree with Eric that it takes time and that the process should be started right now because we can't wait till January to try and get everything worked out because we're not going to have time to make sure that we're doing a good job at picking.
Ann Mills.
Yeah, so again, the process takes time, and it's not something, as Eric said, that you can rush. I too have served on many committees, high-ranking committees, in both high school, college-level situations. So we probably, the process needs to probably start before the new board is in place in January because that just gives us too much, doesn't leave us enough time to do it properly and vet everybody that we need to. Those that are elected to the board will have some say because they will be in place starting January, so whoever is elected to the board will be able to participate in the process. The outgoing people were voted into board positions by the community members, and so they need to start the process so that we make sure that we have enough time.
Matt Woodboom.
We met with the Minnesota School Board Association leadership a week ago. They gave us a variety of options as to how to proceed with the process. And I felt like the suggestion, the timeline they laid out, was an October start with a February to March completion. It appeared to be the way to do it in my eyes, and given a chance for newly-elected individuals after November to be able to attend meetings, to be able to hear about the scheduling, so they're able to have their calendars ready to go in January. And I think I put a lot, this organization does 30 searches yearly, and they know how it works, and it's important that we follow a timeline that gives us the best candidates too, because it might be convenient for us, but it might not fit the pool of being able to have the best names for us to pick from. And so I encourage us to follow an example of the route that's been used in the past.
Steve Schneider.
The process for picking a superintendent, fortunately for Worthington, hasn't happened very often. We've been very lucky to have good superintendents in here for a long period of time. I think that the sooner we get started, the better off we're going to be. If we have a process that gets going that can use input from the school board to help guide it, I would certainly hope that our candidates who are here now, if it's before the election, would be willing to participate in that process and give advice as they could. Once the election's done, we'll know who will be in place, and then it'll be easier for those people who are, who will be sworn in the first part of the year, will be able to participate then. So I think the earlier we get going, the better. I think the involvement of all of the candidates in it should be, they should be considering to do that. And then to finish it off, I think that'll be done probably sometime next year when the final decisions are being made. But I would hope everybody be participating now.
Darla Agard. And I think if you can just, as loud as you can, I'm getting a so-so response to hearing, so.
All right. I'll be super loud. So I think that the plan that's been laid out by MSBA last week is the plan that the district should follow. And I say that because this board sets the tone for the entire district. And if you rush through this decision and you unilaterally make this decision before, let's say, the democratic process, right, of four empty seats or four seats open on the board is completed, I think you're going to break down the relationship between any new board members and that superintendent that you've rushed to hire. I've hired a lot of people. I've hired a lot of executives. It takes time. You got to write the job description. You've got to make sure you've got the checkboxes for what you're looking for in a candidate. You have to recruit in order to get good people to interview in the community or in the district. So I think that the plan that was laid out last week is the plan that should be followed.
Kristin Willarias, you're up next with this question. As one of seven board members, you may find yourself in the minority on some topics. Even though you're firmly against a subject, how would you handle yourself in that situation?
There's a way to handle disagreements, and you can disagree and still work together. And I would work to try to build the communication with the other members. If I was in the minority and everybody else was voting one way and I wanted to vote another way, I would find out why. Okay, what's going on? Why are you voting this? And try and hear that perspective first. And once I've heard that perspective, if I still don't agree, I'm still going to vote the way that my heart says. But I am going to try to have that communication first and try to find out where people are coming from.
Ann Mills.
So I think one of the things that a board member needs to do is not only take my own perspective and listen to other board members and the information that we get, but we are voted into office by community members. So I want community members to be talking to me to say, "This is what I think. This is why I think it," whatever, because I'm one person out of seven representing District 518. So again, that communication piece is really important. At the end of the day, if I feel like I can't vote in favor of something or against something because of what community members have told me, that that's the power of a board, right? I'm one vote, and I get to vote yea or nay on each item that's presented, and then I can move on from there.
Matt Woodboom.
I think split votes are healthy. I think it's a good thing to not see everyone always voting aye. I think it's important that the research is done before you cast a descending vote or a supersend. or a supportive vote and you're the lone eye. But I think that, that exemplifies the process and that the due diligence has been done and you can confidently cast your vote and you're doing it on behalf of the taxpayers you represent. And the vote is cast and you live for another vote. And I've voted no many times, and I think that it is because of an overall viewpoint of the process. I think consistency in that voting approach is an important part of representing yourself and your taxpayer as you govern their dollars in a board setting.
Steve Schneider.
Coming to, coming to some kind of consensus on a board when you're voting can be challenging at times and beneficial in others. You're always going to have a group when there's a contentious issue where somebody's going to, somebody's going to prevail and somebody's not going to, or one side is going to, one's not. But I think, as Matt said, I think it's important that, that we hear all input and we weigh the decisions that we make very carefully. And there's a lot to take into consideration. You know, we have, we have our, the best, what we think are the best interests of our students, the best interests of our community, the taxpayers, other factors that you may not even think of at this point that can affect what you're deciding on. So, you know, I think it's, listening is important, listening to all sides and trying to find the best outcome that you can come to. But inevitably, if you feel strongly about something, you need to vote what you feel best. And most often I voted, I've always felt that the best way to do it is, is, I, I think I tried to vote, if everybody had all the information I had and everything I got to sit in and do, they'd probably vote the same way I did.
Darla Agard.
All right, so I agree with, with Matt that I, I think a healthy discussion and varying opinions is a really good thing for the board. I think we need to have people that challenge the status quo here and do that respectively. It, it doesn't mean we can't collaborate, it doesn't mean that we can't negotiate, but I think that is a healthy part of being part of a board. And at the end of the day, I'm going to go back to my opening statement, I, I'm committed to making informed decisions. And that includes doing the research and talking to people and getting the feedback. Because if I'm voting on something and I haven't done that research, then I'm just representing me. And I don't think that, that's what this position is about.
Eric Parrish.
I also think that an informed decision is important and understanding your constituency and understanding the facts and making, and being able to synthesize an idea and stand up for that idea as an individual and as a board is very important. I come from a background in the theater where we work collaboratively a lot, and we're working with many designers and you're trying to come to a point and a decision which involves many different aspects, many different perspectives, many different experiences, many different skill sets. And when you bring those things together, it helps you be better. I am always better when someone else has a contrary opinion to mine because it helps me see the world in a new way, it helps me see an issue in a new way. And we really need to embrace that collaborative aspect. My experience at the Premier Theater in Sioux Falls, when you vote and you walk, you don't walk away from a losing vote, you come together and you work harder to move forward.
All right, Anne Mills, this, we'll start with you this time. I'm going to combine two of them. What do you think the role of a school board should be and why did you decide to run?
I'm going to take them in reverse order. I decided to run because, as I said in my opening statement, I'm passionate about public education, and I have been for, long before I became a teacher. My dad served on the local school board way, way back when, when I was in high school. So I think that that's really important, that we have people that are passionate about public education, and I am that person. I'm sorry, Mike, what was the second part of the question?
Yeah, what do you think the role of a school board should be?
Role of a board member is to represent the constituents. I'm, again, one person of seven that is here representing people that live in District 518. And I need to listen to the people and, but also do what is best for students. So I wish more people would come to events like this. I wish more people would come to the public input meetings that we have when we have things that, like a building that we need to address, et cetera. Thank you.
Matt Whitboom.
When Mr. Schaefer moved out of the district a few years ago, I put my hat in the ring to be selected by the school board to fill that vacant position. And I did so because I think it's important that the school board has representatives that have kids in the district. At the time, I had four kids going to school and attending the classes, and I think that's an important part of being aware of what's happening within the, the school buildings. And I plan to, the same attitude as when I sought to be a commissioner, I'm a believer in term limits. And I imposed myself an eight-year term there, and I would do two terms here representing. And our, our role is to, to, to be listeners and to be able to stand up and speak when we feel it necessary.
Steve Schneider.
The role of the school board is to set policy and represent the community in the education of our children. And it's important for us to understand our roles compared to what a teacher does or, or what a custodial person does or anybody else. We aren't there necessarily to teach our children, although we serve a role in our, in their education. We're there to set policy, to manage this district itself. And we do that by getting input from our community, from the, from the staff, from the people we serve, our students and stuff, to best do that. I ran for the school board 27 years ago because I had an interest in continuing to serve the community. I was involved in many of the civic organizations in the community, the Optimist Club, the Kiwanis Club. I was active in my church, I was active in the Christian, the Catholic school in Worthington. I served on different boards for my profession. I feel it's important that we give back and, and put time into all aspects of our life, not just concentrate on one or two areas. So I feel it's important to, to be active in our community, and I look forward to continuing the activity by serving on the school board.
Darla Agard.
Yeah, I'm going to take it in reverse order, too. So why did you decide to run? I believe in public education. I'm passionate about public education. I want to give back to the community that I grew up in. And I want to help rebuild the relationships between the schools and our community. As far as the role of the school board, I might have a little bit of a different slant on this. I think the school board should be representing the diverse voices of our students, our staff, and our community. I also think the school board should be bringing innovative solutions to solve the complex challenges that face the district today.
Eric Parrish.
When I threw my hat in for Mr. Schaefer's seat, I shared a unique perspective with the interview community, or committee that I had. And then that is, as an instructor at Minnesota West, I have a really unique experience of seeing the work of our high school students in comparison to neighboring districts. And I also teach at Mankato State, or Minnesota State-Mankato, and also at Central Lakes College in Brainerd. And I can, my, my experience has taught me pretty easily that I can identify what school the student is coming from based on their strengths and their weaknesses. And I too think that the power of a public education is, is unbelievable, and we need to, as a school board, be supporting our staff, our administrators, our teachers, our paras, everyone in that building. We're working towards a, a common goal, and it is our job to support them so that they can do their best work.
Kristen Maleris.
As a teacher myself, I think that, that is, that's actually one of the big reasons why I decided to run, is that I am a teacher. I see things from the perspective of a teacher in the school. But at the same time, I work with diverse students and see the needs that these students have, and I see the needs that teachers have. And being in the community, I see some of the needs that are in the community. And I think that a school board member needs to be able to listen to all of that and try and find out the best way to help our schools be the best that they can be to educate our students. And I think that a teacher being in that role brings a unique perspective of somebody who has actually been in that classroom, in that school district.
All right, Matt Whitboom, we'll start you off this time. I'm trying to piece three together, so bear with me here. In the past academic school year, the board addressed whether teachers' Puerto Rican flag and pride posters should be allowed in a classroom. There've also been national and regional discussions on, on book bans and appropriateness of that. Can you speak to your stance on those issues?
A year ago, the process started of addressing an issue that was brought forth from a classroom. And the, the school board chose to do its best at that time with information at head to create policy regarding the issue. At that time, I was leery with the idea of creating policy in the heat of the moment. My hope was that we'd be able to step back and not with an emotion-filled head craft policy. That's not a good time to do it. We had to have something to, to be able to, to continue to function from a, a school standpoint if there continued to be concerns that parents had and the teachers had and that students had. It was a, a heat-of-the-moment decision that I, in retrospect, we could have stepped back and in the, the off-season summer, when we do a lot of policy work, taken our time and been able to craft something after the instant reaction. But a, a policy is designed to continuously be looked at, and I hope as we continue to get farther from the circumstance, we can create a, a policy and improve on it that addresses the needs of all of our students.
Steve Schneider.
Yes, I, as I recall, when we just got started, we received complaints. Our administration followed up on those complaints, trying to do what they felt was best for our, for our community and for the school. We were, we were confronted by the fact that the administration didn't have the right to do this. It wasn't in the policy. So the process started out with updating the policy to make it clear that the superintendent actually did have the responsibility and the authority to do that. And it grew into something that was much more than just the, the saying who was responsible, who had the authority to do this. I think in the, in the long run and stuff, I think the, the administrators and superintendents do have to have the authority to make those decisions within our district. Whether or not a, a country flag from another country should be flown in our school district, my feeling has always been the United States flag is the appropriate country flag, the Minnesota flag is, is the appropriate state or territorial flag. That's, that's where we're at. We're in Minnesota and we're in the United States. When it comes to great pride, I think everybody should be, be proud of their heritage or their, or where they're from and what they believe in. I think that the school district should have the means in, in place for support of students, no matter what their background and, and what they, what they feel is appropriate for them. So I think in the long term, we need to work out finding a way to support the students, which is what our position is, and to also support our staff if they have different views.
Darla Agard.
Yes, so I followed this really closely when it was happening, and I believe that the process was flawed, and I think it contributed to the breakdown in the communication and the respect between the schools and the community. I don't disagree that the United States flag and the Minnesota flag should be up in a classroom. My perspective is, aren't we so much more than that, though? Aren't we proud of so many other things and don't we represent so many other things? If we believe in inclusion and diversity from a society and a community, community perspective, why would we take down symbols that support that and teach that? Kids need to feel like they belong. And on the flip side of that, kids need to understand that it's their responsibility as part of this community and part of this society that they make others feel included as well.
Eric Parrish.
When this issue came up in front of the board, I spent several days advocating to the board to take a measured approach to a decision around this. I sent several emails, I made several phone calls. But more than that, I received so many text messages and phone calls from people in the community who felt scared and helpless to do anything and did not want to speak up. And it became something that I felt, obviously personal for me, to be an advocate for those students because representation matters. And whether you are on one side of an issue or the other side of an issue, there will always be someone who disagrees with you. And what we really need to do is come together and decide what really is the issue. Do we really understand what the problem is? Do we really understand why this is becoming an issue? Many of these things that were discussed are brought up to become divisive, and divisiveness is not helpful in an education situation. And we really need to lead with compassion, with understanding, and with a collaborative approach.
Kristen Maleris.
This topic, I felt caught right in the middle when it was happening because I could see both sides. I could see the side of the parent that was concerned about the, what was being taught their child by the flag being there. But I could also see the side of this teacher who was just trying to care about his kids. And it's not a, it's not a subject that is going to have an easy answer because you're not going to have everybody happy with whatever you decide. And I do, I have to agree with Matt that this, it should have taken a little bit more time to figure this out. And everybody should have had a say in what was going on. And instead, it kind of felt like that parent was the only one that had a say.
Anne Mills.
So one of the things that the district has talked about for as many years as I've lived in the district is having people that represent all of the diversity that exists within our district. We're trying to get more diverse teachers, we're trying to get more diverse paras, we're trying... And so when this topic came up, I too, like some of the others, felt caught. I mean, one of the jobs of a school board is policymaking. But I think we, there, we should have taken more time, the board should have taken more time to look at it and really communicate, ask questions of people within the community to see what the community felt like. I feel like it was a reaction to a single parent or a couple of parents versus something that was a much larger issue. Yeah.
I think we started with Matt, so Steve Schneider, right? So Steve Schneider, we'll start with you on this. I think I'm lumping about seven questions together. They all get to the core of fiscal responsibility. I'm just going to quote a few references. Concerns about common sense spending, concerns about communication, concerns about cost and recruitment of administrators, concerns about, at least some national stats that were quoted, about increased administrative and spending versus teacher spending or student increases, communications with taxpayers, and specifically, maybe we've built a lot of wonderful facilities from gymnastics to, to football stadiums, track complex, and now a new hockey arena plans. Can you speak to the, the spending constraints or, or focus and if those dollars are being spent in the right directions? Long one, sorry. Spending.
Spending. And that's a minute question, right?
That's a minute. (laughter)
Or shorter.
Or shorter, okay.
Combining all that, let's maybe go two minutes.
Good suggestion. Two minutes.
Thank you. Yeah, obviously, a big part of the school board responsibility is the budgeting for the district. I think what our school board has been doing for the last 22-plus years has been being very responsible for how the money is being spent. We have a balanced budget. We have reserves in place. We're able to make improvements to our district. When you have a football stadium or a track and field area and football area and stuff that wasn't made for soccer being played on it, too, with the turf field, and it's the original field that came with our, with our school district, with our high school. You know, at some point, you have to improve your facilities and maintain them. And that's, I think, what we've been pretty much working on, is maintaining our district and keeping up our facilities for our students and for the community. Along with that, I think also, we have a responsibility to have the facilities available that we need for education. And that means that if you have more students and more teachers and you don't have classrooms, you need to provide the facilities for them to work with also. So I think in the long run, the school board has been very fiscally responsible. When the referendum is necessary for something, we ask the taxpayers to vote on that referendum. If they vote it down, it doesn't mean that the need disappeared. It just means that they weren't, the majority of the people weren't supporting at that point. But the need is still there. And as for the school board, we do have a responsibility to make sure that the community is aware of that need. It didn't go away. Sometimes, if you delay your improvements, in the long run, it ends up costing you more. It's not that it doesn't need to be done. It's not probably going to end up being done. It's just a question of how much more are you going to pay for it while you have these delays on trying to convince everybody that this is the right thing to do. So I think in the long run, the school board in the present and past has been very fiscally responsible to have what we have at the costs we have. And I think they'll continue to do that. No matter which members are on the board, they'll continue that fiscal responsibility.
Darla Agard.
Yes, so from fiscal transparency, I've done a bunch of research. And this district is in very good shape compared to the majority of Minnesota. That being said, I do believe that we need to keep a more careful eye on what we're doing from a financial perspective. And I do think there needs to be a lot more transparency in what's happening here. Students, again, they should be front and center of every financial decision we make. I would like to talk a lot less about facilities and a lot more about how we pay our teachers, how we recruit teachers, how we retain teachers, and how we invest to change the student's success that we have here in this district. So if we're going to talk about financial decisions and we're going to talk about fiscal responsibility, I want to talk about the education. And again, going back to the referendum, going back to the build, I do think that the district has enough money to address the highest priority issues. They're going to have to be creative about it, and they're going to have to do this in phases, and they're going to have to do this in increments. But I think they can make that happen.
Eric Parrish. Again, my background in nonprofit work is pretty straightforward when it comes to fiscal responsibility because the bottom line is the bottom line. The checking account says zero or it says $1, right? And so to talk about finances, we really need to think about what it is that we are investing in. And I absolutely agree that we need to focus on our academics. We need to focus on our technology. The technology in this, in our world is changing so rapidly that it's even, you know, it's complex for me as a Gen Xer, sort of, I'm an edge, kind of technically. But the point is, is that, you know, that's part of the teaching retention piece of this, right? If you have, if you're providing the trainings, if you're providing the curriculum, if you're providing the technology, you are doing your students good. And, you know, when we talk about our budget, we have, the district here has one of the largest reserves per capita, per student, in the state. And that's great. The stewardship of those dollars has been there. But we really need to think about what happens in 15 years, what happens in 20 years, what happens when, you know, the different technologies start in taking over the way that we do things in the classroom. And we have to make a major shift. We have to think about that in the future. And spending responsibly, understanding what we're spending money on, why we're spending it, how much, you know, I'm a, it's a joke at the church, I work at First Lutheran, and I'm known as the spreadsheet guy, right? I love a good spreadsheet. But that's what budgets are about. They're item, they're line items, and zero is zero.
Kristin Malers.
So one of the negative things about coming after several people is you start to sound like you're just repeating everything that everybody else is saying. But I would agree. Our school district has been very careful with how we spend our money. We've got the money built there. It's sitting there. And the other side of this is exactly like what was already said. We need to figure out what is our priority. And we are losing teachers. We are short teachers. And that hurts the students. And education should be for the students. And if we're not doing something to keep the teachers here and to get the teachers here, then that's going to hurt our students. Building a brand-new $50 million sports complex, I'm just over-exaggerating here, but that is not going to necessarily draw teachers that are qualified to teach our students. We need to be doing the things to help keep those teachers and to bring those teachers here so that we are actually giving into our students, giving our students what they need to be successful. We need to be giving the teachers what they need to be successful in teaching our students. That's where our money needs to be going. And yes, we need to make sure that we are being very transparent about what we're doing and why we're doing it. Why are we spending this money on such and such? What is the purpose of that? How is that moving forward what our ultimate purpose actually is?
Ann Mills.
So having served on the board previously and having continued following it and following it even before I was on the board, I know that the boards that have been in place have been fiscally responsible. And several people have already mentioned that. Like others, I think the educational facilities, the academic piece of spending money needs to be a priority. We are an educational institution. But I also recognize when we do things like putting turf down on the field, it's not only safer for the students, but it also is opportunity for other events to occur, which is bringing revenue to the city of Worthington or Nobles County or whatever the circumstance is. So it's, it's not always very cut and dry. It can be kind of tricky to figure out what does that look like. I think community members are interesting because they have consistently voted no on things like building referendums. I'm thrilled at the number of people that are here tonight. But how many families do we serve in District 518, and this is the representation that we have from the community? I know, having been on the board, we have put out, there's, "Come to the school buildings. Come to the public meeting. Come to this event." And we're trying to get the information out, and the public is not coming. They are simply voting no. So we need to do something. And I, right now, I don't have the answer. To try and reach people so that they will come to events like this, so that they can hear the information, so that they're actually voting based on knowledge, not just a gut reaction.
Ann, I think they're all watching on Cable 3, right, Randy? Matt Widboom.
Into my second year of doing this position as a school board member, it certainly is drinking out of a fire hose of understanding how the process works in a $72 million budget and one of the higher employers of the town. And the complexity of the funding process was clearly designed just to confuse us, I think, from a state standpoint. But that, from a public servant standpoint, we do not have any money. All the money that's allocated to do these programs is your money. That's our taxpayers' money throughout the state and the nation. And it just comes in a different envelope. And I think that's an important part for us to remember as we're putting those dollars to work in our district. When I was on the soybean grower board, the pledge you took said, "Can you stand in front of a member and tell him that you spent his money wisely?" And I think that's something that I carry with me when I'm making these kinds of decisions as well. And we talk about teacher recruitment and retention. And something that doesn't really cost a lot is culture. And you don't put a price tag on the culture. But I think the culture has a big part of what we're looking at, continuing to broaden and retain and value the teachers that we have that educate the kids, that are the part of our operation. We aren't making widgets or boxes. We're making young people that are going to go out and represent us here and in the world. And that's the part that we have to remember, that we're one of the most unique businesses that is around. It's a person that's in that classroom that's taking that out of their factory and representing us. And I think that's another part of the investment of how we're equipping those young people to get out there and represent us.
Darla, you're up first again. So we'll start with the question that came up from a few of you. What do you think could help solve that teacher recruitment challenge? And what would help recruit the best talent?
From a teacher recruitment perspective, I'd be curious to see what the district has tried before. Have we been out to the colleges and universities here in Minnesota? Have we gone to their job fairs? Have we opened up student teaching to Worthington? Are we out there and are we looking for people that might want to come here and explore Worthington and decide that they want to stay? The other piece of it is, I don't know if you've ever explored, maybe providing small scholarships to students that are part of an education program that are already at the colleges and universities. If we can commit a little bit of money to them while they're in school and have them sign a little bit of agreement, they can come back and work for us for a few years, we might be able to capture some new teachers. I don't know if any of this has been considered, but it's something I would want to do. And what was the second part?
The best talent.
And the best talent, yeah. If you're not going out and you're not at the colleges and universities and looking for students there, then I think you have to invest in what you have here. So you've got a lot of teachers here. You have a lot of educators here. Don't forget to invest in them and have them, so that you can keep them here and you can retain them here. The other thing I'd want to point out is that that step and lane compensation model might be something that you want to revisit. I'm pretty sure that that's what's used here. And I think there's a lot of opportunity to make sure that we are paying our teachers a fair wage and that they are getting increases as appropriate.
Eric Parrish. As I said in the previous question, you know, the retaining and recruitment of teachers is more than just money. I mean, we tried the cash incentives last year to some success, but not a lot of success. And, you know, I'm part of the Teacher Pathway Program, and I'm aware of how that works out at Minnesota West, where we're trying to recruit our own to come back to our schools. And we've had some success with that. That's evident this year with the new teachers that we're hiring. But for me, if you know me, you've heard me say this multiple times, Worthington is a microcosm of the world, of the United States. And we have a lot of the problems that the United States has in a small way. And we sometimes choose to look at that as a small town, and we sometimes choose to look at that as a big city. And really, for me, the idea of recruiting teachers is, do teachers want to come to our community? What's the civic engagement there? What's our housing crisis? Can a teacher afford to live in Worthington with, on a starting teaching salary? There are several new teachers this year who are living outside of our community flatly, solely because they can't afford to live here.
I think Darla and Eric must be sharing my brain or reading my brain or something. I don't know what's going on here. As a teacher, as a former teacher in this district, I heard many times the statement, "Well, at least this person's a warm body." That goes right against what we're talking about, about the best talent and getting the best teachers here. We're willing to just accept whatever. And that's not really necessarily doing what we want it to do. But the other side of that is, teachers should feel like they can be who they are, that they can teach out of their gifts and their talents and not be afraid that somebody is going to say, "Oh, you're done" because they didn't teach the way you thought that they should. Now, obviously, we have the Board of Education that we have to follow, but we need to be a little less nitpicky.
Ann Mills.
So Worthington is not unique. There is a teacher shortage nationwide. I am licensed to teach in five states. And I'm going to tell you that I had five people from five different states contact me when I decided that I was going to leave the job that I was in. So Worthington is not alone. It's a nationwide crisis right now. Educators nationwide are being asked to wear so many hats right now that the burnout rate, I don't know what it is, but it's tough. Because you're being an educator, you're being the advisor, you're helping with schedules, you're et cetera, et cetera. There's a whole list of things. And I'm not saying that they shouldn't have to do some of those things, but it's a lot. It's a lot of hats to wear. We have invested in Grow Your Own, so I think that that is one thing that we have done in this district. It's just taking time for that to catch up.
Matt Widboom.
I think that is a good example of making attempts to think outside the box and not continuously doing the same thing and expect different results. That's what insanity is defined as. And so we're, we are expanding the net being cast at different colleges and trying to find different ways to encourage folks to come here, to relocate here, to try a different career. But that housing situation is a true challenge. And that's something that our city is doing the best they can, I believe, with county assistance and with private partnerships to try to address that. But that's a good example of an item that has a direct impact on us without really being able to address it. And I think that we've also, over years, have tried to foster relationships with other teachers, a mentoring program within our schools, to show that we value these new people and want them to continue to grow and be better and take further education and continue to learn and be a part of our teaching process. And so I give a lot of credit to administration for continuously putting those programs in place to show our teachers that we do value them.
Steve Schneider.
The demand for teachers, as you've heard, is very high, and supply is getting lower and lower. I talked to administrators. We used to get hundreds of applicants. Now they're lucky if they get a handful in some cases. I'm on the Southwest Central Service Co-op Board, representing not just Worthington, but all school boards in this, in this part of the southwest Minnesota. And they're the same thing there and stuff. They're not, it's not just teachers. There's paras, there's all kinds of staff. All staff are hard to find right now, whether in private business, public, or whatever. So I think those are always going to be a challenge for us in the future. The state demographers told us this many, many years ago, that we have the baby boomers going out, and we're going to lose our workforce, and we're going to be short of workers. And that's exactly what happened. So I think what we have to do, everything we can to try and get them, we're doing a lot of the things everybody suggested. We are offering scholarship assistance. We're trying to grow our own. We started a partnership with Southwest State so they can work out of Minnesota West to get their, get their degrees without having to actually go out of town to get that, so they can stay at home and be more affordable to them. So I think, I think in the long run, we're doing a lot of different things. We're trying to find answers, and we're open to any other suggestions to get, improve the relationship with the teachers and to also improve our salaries, our benefits, and those types of things as best we can.
Okay, this time, I think we start with Eric Parrish. This may be able to be a 30-second. We've still got a lot of good questions, and I appreciate all the questions. I want to try to get through as many as we can. We'll do this maybe as a 30-second question. I think it's just a more direct one. Where do you stand on cell phones and electronic Where do you stand on cell phones and electronic issues in each school? Should they be limited, banned, or along those lines, do you think e-learning days are productive enough to continue? Or is that a minute?
Well, they're seemingly, they're electronic questions, but they're seemingly unrelated, right? Are e-learning days effective? Well, that really depends on the teacher's ability to facilitate some sort of learning and the preparedness that they have for that, and the curriculum resources that they have so that they can be successful. But it's also use to, the students' access to technology, to Wi-Fi, to charging stations, to power, et cetera. So are they effective? I don't have any data, but I would think that there are a lot more factors than what's immediately apparent. In terms of cell phones, I am known for Eric's cellphone bucket, and everybody puts their phone in the bucket at rehearsal, and nobody gets to be on their phone until rehearsal is done. I am the worst at being on my cellphone. You can ask everyone in that back row back there. And so I do think they're distracting, and I do think that we need policy around that.
Kristin Valeris.
So I started teaching at Pipestone today, and they have an absolutely zero cellphone policy, and I love it. I did not think I was going to like it, and I love it. I love my kids not being distracted by their phones while I'm trying to talk to them. And then in terms of the e-learning days, I would agree with Eric. It really depends on the teacher. I think if a teacher is really engaged in providing those things that work, I think it really can work. And I think that there's some teachers that just put minimal effort, and those are the instances that it doesn't necessarily work.
Ann Mills.
I'm going to rock the boat. I don't have strong feelings about cell phones in classrooms, because I have used it at times as a learning tool, where I'm asking students to respond to questions, and they're actually using their cellphone to engage in the educational process. I work with high schoolers, so it can be an issue. But because they're high school students, I have always had the stance of, if you choose your phone over doing the work, there are consequences. So your choices always have consequences. You make good choices, and you get good consequences. You make bad choices, and you have bad consequences. There you go. E-learning days, as a teacher myself and seeing colleagues work and put together lessons for e-learning days, I do think that they are effective. But Eric makes a good point about access to Wi-Fi, which is bigger than any of us. So that can definitely be an issue.
Matt Whitcomb.
I've brought up in discussions with administration to tighten and stiffen our cellphone policy. And I think that was a good example, as a lone member on the board, of, it takes buy-in. It takes everyone, it takes, a policy like that, the teachers have to be behind. And they have to be the ones that drive that discussion. Myself, it all gets thrown in the street as you walk in the door. And that's what I tell my kids, that I think it's the root of so many problems, especially in our younger kids, that have that at their instant. And so I would support an intense policy, as long as our teachers were able to believe that was something to enforce. I've watched my kids go through the e-learning process, and in some cases, it worked swimmingly, so well, that they could have done the entire year that way. And I think it's a nice tool for us to have, to be able to still educate our kids in snow day or other events where we can't be in the building.
Steve Schneider.
E-learning is a great opportunity for us. We have a lot of students who take classes through our program, our electronic program, our Vibe program. And it helps those students catch up and get ahead of classes that they maybe couldn't get or missed out on and need to make up credits. So I think e-learning has a real good place in our educational system. It doesn't necessarily work for everyone, though. And I think you have to be careful that just because we're doing it means kids are learning and stuff. It's a mixed bag. So it has very good results in some cases, in other cases, we just have to watch the student, monitor, make sure it's right for them, not one size fits all for everyone. When it comes to cell phones, obviously, elementary school, kids don't need to have their cell phones, probably intermediate school. As you get in older and stuff, it's hard for the kids. I think we have too much cellphone time, everybody, adults and students. I think that we need to be more socially responsible. I was able to listen to a radio program today that was discussing this more on a national level, and talking to states that have passed the laws and stuff restricting it. And I think overall, I think we're going to see more restrictions on cellphone use because it's too distracting, and they're just not learning when they got their cell phones going.
Darla Higard.
So for e-learning, I think it's a mixed bag. I think students all learn differently, and there are some people who can't learn in that environment. I am one of those people. So if you give me an e-learning task, I'm not very good at it. I don't pay attention, I get distracted. So students have got to be that way as well. The other thing about e-learning is, if you don't have a parental support network at home, it's going to be really tough to have students complete the work and to stay on task and to get it done. So I think that's part of the mixed bag as well. With regard to cell phones in schools, I believe the state is discussing or is going to ask us to have a policy in place by March 15th of 2025. So this is going to come up, and we're going to have to know what we're going to do by then. I'm going to throw it back. And when I was in high school, I don't think, my parents called me during the school day a single solitary time. They didn't need to be in touch with me. And, oh, I'm out of time. One more thing, I think it's horribly distracting for students. I'd love to put those cell phones in a bag and seal them up and have students set them aside. The one thing I don't want to do is have teachers policing a policy. They wear too many hats, we shouldn't ask them to wear another one.
Kristin Valeris, this is your question first. Combining two again, but hopefully it makes sense. Please name one characteristic you believe is most important in the next superintendent, and perhaps one characteristic that you bring as a school board member.
I think that the characteristic that would be good for the next superintendent would be the ability to have those communications, have those discussions with people, and be willing to not always be right. And what I would bring is the fact that I am in a classroom, and I've been teaching in, I was teaching in Worthington for several years, so I understand the district. And so that kind of altogether would be.
Ann Mills.
The characteristic that I'd like to see in a superintendent that we hire is that that person is approachable. I think that that's really important, that people feel like they can talk to that person and just have that open communication. A characteristic that I have that sometimes is good and sometimes is bad is, you don't usually have to guess what I'm thinking, because I'm going to let you know.
Matt Whitcomb.
It might be cliche, and I've mentioned it many times, but I think the culture word is an important word. And I think it starts with that, and there's so many other characteristics that surround that. And our flow chart starts, the culture setting at the top. And I think it funnels down all the way through our entire staff, from the administration to each building, to each staff member. And I think that that pace setting with the culture attitude is very important. I think I just take the word approachable, from my standpoint of being able to be, was that the time, Jim?
You've got 30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay. Yesterday, I received a phone call from a concerned citizen about the money that the school was spending on the superintendent's search. And we had a good discussion about that, and I hung up the phone and took a call from a parent that was concerned over curriculum in our high school. And I did my best to take those messages and to have a discussion about the fiscal responsibility of the district, but then also to point that parent in the right direction. And I promised them a follow-up as to how their concerns were handled. I think that it's not our job to micromanage, but it's to put the people in the right position to be able to be, feel like they were answered and heard, and that their concerns were addressed.
Steve Schneider.
I think from not just our superintendent's perspective, but all our administrators' perspective, is that they need to be focused on the betterment of our district as a whole. That involves our students, our staff, our community. You can't just focus on one area individually and stuff, you need to be focused on all aspects of being part of our community, part of our school, and being good leaders and setting an example for those areas. For myself, I try not to come in with a predetermined answer. I try to be more balanced in how I approach things. I like to listen to people, don't always agree with everybody, everybody doesn't agree with me. But I think it's important to listen to them, try and understand their perspective. But I also like to think that when I get done, if I make a decision, I think it's based on the information I have available to me. I think I try to do what's best for the students, what's best for our community as a whole, and do that in a balanced format without predetermining what should be happening before it actually happens.
Darla Higard.
A characteristic for the new superintendent, I'm a strong believer in change is good. I would like to see someone who comes in and challenges the status quo, based on what they're hearing from the community, the staff, and the students. As far as a characteristic for myself on the school board, I think I'm an innovative problem solver. I do that through collaboration, through negotiation, through research. I like to involve people in that problem-solving skill. So I think that's a characteristic that I could bring to the board.
Eric Parrish.
I think a characteristic for our incoming superintendent needs to be someone who is a leader of integrity and can lead a team of professionals. I've had several conversations with most of the principals in the last week, and visiting their buildings and getting my eyes on what's going on in our classrooms. And the general consensus is that they want someone to come in and let them do their thing, support them, be a team player, and let them, we're paying them to lead, we need them to lead. As to a personal characteristic, I'm a curious, inquisitive question-asker, sometimes to everyone's detriment, but I want to have all the information. Having all the information, even if it's information that I don't want to hear, helps me make a decision that is the best decision that I can make at the time that I'm asked to make it. And being a curious person is absolutely the characteristic I would bring.
Okay, we're getting a little closer to that. I've got two more questions, like we're going to do 30-second questions, if that's okay, and then we'll finish with the one-minute wrap-up from everybody, closing comments. Ann, I think you're first here this time. How should the district address the use of artificial intelligence? Is a policy needed to define the use of AI for teachers and students? 30 seconds, please.
AI is here to stay, it's not leaving. I do think we probably need a policy, and one of the things that I would encourage the district to do, if they're not already, is to look at ways that we can actually use AI in education. I've been to several conferences, and we're looking at ways to not make it the bad guy.
Matt Whitcomb.
I think this is a good example of locking arms with the other schools throughout our state, because we're all, we have a state association that is ahead of us in being aware of it. And let's not chart the territory ourselves, let's try to be a part of a bigger process to help shape something that works, because this is such a giant thing that we can't do it ourselves. We have to take the professionals and those that are already on top of it and let them help us put a policy that makes sense in our district and throughout the state.
Steve Schneider.
As we're all aware, artificial intelligence has been with us for some time. It started out small, and now it's gotten to the point where it's a concern. I think like all technology and stuff, it's always going to have good and bad. The good news is, it can help us learn, it can help our students do better, it can help us to be more productive, and we can learn better. But with the good always comes the bad, just like cell phones and stuff. Cell phones are great instruments, started out small, and they grew into something that became problematic now. And I think artificial intelligence is the same thing. We're just going to have to find a balance between what's good and encourage that, and what's bad, and filter that out.
Darla Higard.
Yep, AI. I love AI. I use it every single day in my job. The people who report to me, the teams that report to me, use it every single day in their job. This world is going to change. Careers that we have today are going to disappear tomorrow because of AI. I'm not worried about a policy, I'm worried about getting it in our curriculum so that the students understand what's coming and what's going to be available to them. Because as many careers that disappear, new careers are going to pop up for them. And I want them on that cutting edge of that opportunity.
Eric Parrish.
I was part of the team at Minnesota West that first started looking at this issue. And back when ChatGPT was in still 2.0, I took the opportunity to ask it the same question every Monday for a year, because I wanted to see how the answer evolved. The thing is, is that we still know, as educated individuals, when it's wrong. Do our students, and will the people in the future? That's the thing that scares me about it, right? Just over the summer, it has gained the ability to read a PDF. So every lesson plan that I have used, using a PDF so that students can do a homework without the ChatGPT giving it an answer, that's completely out of the window now, because it can read that PDF and do the homework for them. I agree that we need to figure out how we can get it into our classroom and make it useful and understand that, but I do think it's much bigger than any of us have the ability to wrap around our mind around.
Future moderators, maybe. Kristin Valeris.
Short answer, yes, I think we need a policy. The June of 2023, we had the opportunity to take a training with AI. And at the time, I was scared to death to even try anything AI. It got my toes wet, is about all that that training did. But since then, I've tried to utilize it a little bit more and tried to work with it to see what I could come up with. And one of the classes that I'm taking right now for my master's is actually talking exactly about that. It's talking about how we can use AI in the classroom. And I think that it just is going to require a little bit more looking into some of those things.
Ann Mills.
No.
Oh, did we do that already?
I just started.
Oh, sorry, thank you. Okay. Only time I did that tonight, though.
It is.
I was kind of worried about that. Matt Whitcomb, we're going to start you off with a final question, we'll go with 30 seconds here again. I'm going to combine a couple. How do you think, or how do you determine if our school is successful? And to maybe add to that, what do you think could be done to improve test scores?
State standards and the testing requirements have put so much pressure on our teachers to try to figure out how to do that. I think that's forced us to miss the mark sometimes, not because of the teachers, but because of the requirements. If the state would just let us educate our kids that are so unique and so different than any other district, we have kids that aren't here to learn algebra three, they're here to figure out how to wire their house and how to balance their checkbook. I know that's not a realistic thing because of the state standards. But if we, just when we have the opportunity to try to craft something to work for our kids, I think that is such an important part of being able to do that when we have an opportunity to.
Steve Schneider.
Yeah, I think judging our students as a group, we segregate them, and we break them down into smaller areas, and then we can see how that group is doing compared to another group. I think every student learns as they go, some learn better and faster than others, some need a little bit more help than others. But I think it's more important for us to judge the progress that each student makes individually, comparing how we are doing as a school as a whole, especially when you compare us to the rest of the state. When we have students that come into our community and struggle with the English language, maybe don't have a lot of formal education, all those types of factors come into how fast they're going to learn, how they're going to proceed, and how they're going to show up on state tests. So it's So it's not a good thing to compare us that way. As far as what to do, I think we just need to continue to help the students learn as quickly as they can by having special programs for those who need extra help. Like reading, learning to read by third grade is really key to learning it all.
Darla Higard.
Determining whether or not the school is successful, I think it's a variety of factors. It's graduation rates, it's test scores, it's growth of students, it's the retaining of instructors. I think how you weight the variety of factors really depends on what you're looking for and the metric that you want to look at and work from. I think we have to look at all of it. We have to double down on where we're successful. We need to focus where we're not. But at the end of the day, students across the entire state are struggling right now. We are in a post-COVID struggle with getting kids at the level that we want them to be at and getting the student success where we'd expect it to be. So we're going to have to be creative about it. We're going to have to look at it a variety of ways. And we're going to have to treat every individual student differently and meet them where they're at.
Eric Persch.
I think it's easy for all of us to say that the post-COVID world and the shutdown damaged our test scores, right? But I think what we really have to take away from that information is it's really about attendance. It's about students being in the classroom, whether that's unexcused absences, whether that's family vacations. If the student is not there learning, then what are they learning? That comes down to scheduling. That comes down to, you know, support from the county in terms of attendance policy, support from our social workers. I mean, all of this, again, our school is not in a silo. We exist in our city and in our county, and those support systems need to be in play at addressing our attendance policy, which puts kids in the room so that they can succeed and learn.
Kristin Maleris.
Okay, there it was. So all students are smart at something. And I think that one of the things that determines the success of a school district is when those kids know that. When the kids leaving the school know that they are smart at something, it's different for every student, but they are smart at something and they need to know that. And when it comes to test scores, it's hard because you have kids who do not know English, who are taking a test completely in English. And their scores pull everybody else's score, the average, down. And that's a really hard thing. And so it's not an easy solution because you're trying to help those students learn enough English that they can pass the test. But then you're also trying to help everybody else to be able to pass, just normal.
Anne Mills.
I think the biggest thing we probably need to look at is graduation rates, but even that is very murky. Josh Noble and I have actually looked at graduation rates for a couple of years, a few years back. And the state reporting on that is even murky about how they do it. So when you look at the state's way of doing it as compared to how an individual school might do it, it can look different. So it's not as cut and dry as we might think it is. We have a unique diversity of students here that not every school district has. And several people have already mentioned it, you know, when students don't speak English and we're asking them to take an English test, that is difficult. Even if their English skills are okay, the verbiage that is used on that test is not necessarily verbiage that our ELL students understand. So it can be very, very difficult for them. I'm not as worried about state test scores. I think they do have a marker, but I'd rather look at an individual and look at where they were in third grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, and then their exit tests.
So we started that last one, Matt. I think we'll wrap up with the one-minute closing comments. I think one minute is what we talked about, right? So one-minute closing comments. First, I just want to say I came here not knowing what to expect. I thought the candidates were thoughtful, respectful, impressive, made me proud and confident in the future of the community. So thank you all. Let's give them a round of applause. If you want, Matt Whitbom will lead off your closing remarks, and we'll go back this way towards Steve.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you to the committee from the Chamber of Commerce for Worthington for their commitment to doing these throughout the entire month. It'll be fun to watch other candidates up on the stage giving their thoughts that are different levels of elections in the next month. For the past two years, I've learned so much about the role as a school board member of District 518. And I feel like I am just learning the process and getting a better handle every day to the complexity of education and what a board member is supposed to do. I'm excited about the opportunity to be a part of a team that selects the next superintendent for District 518. We're an amazing district. We are doing great things and will continue to do great things because we've got great people in our buildings. And I look forward to continuing to be a part of that and help move District 518 forward through a lot of the challenges we talked about tonight. But there isn't anything we can't do if we aren't a unified group of instructors, students, parents, and teachers.
Anne Mills.
Like Matt, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and supporting this and gaining some knowledge so that you can make an informed decision on Election Day. I think I have a unique perspective, having been both an educator in District 518 for six years and having served on the board previously. So I have a unique blend of looking at both what's happening in the building and then what's happening from the board's standpoint. So I would like to have the community support me so that I can take on the challenges that I know are in front of the board in terms of hiring a new superintendent, in terms of our space issues, state test scores. All of those things are challenges that we have been dealing with and we need to continue to try and seek out innovative ways to address those issues.
Kristin Maleris.
I also want to thank everyone for being here and being able to share my heart with some of the people in the community. And I just, I, like Anne said, that she has a unique perspective, being able to be a teacher and on the board before. And I also have a unique perspective, working with, as a teacher, working with diverse students and working in the community in several different places. And I have been able to be a part of all of that. And I have a unique ability to be a voice for so many different people in our community, the teachers, the students, and others in the community because of being a part of all of that. And so I would really appreciate your vote and giving me the opportunity to be able to be a part of this district going forward and continuing to meet the needs of our students.
Eric Persch.
Since we're on the unique train, I too have a unique perspective. Having been a theater director with the school district for several years and also, like I said earlier, with my perspective of working with students from all the surrounding school districts, that really informs me a lot about what we're doing well and what we could do better. Change is inevitable, right? To, we will have, do the math. We will have two people new to the school board, and one of those two people will be a woman. And I think that's great. It really depends on all you all, how much change you want to see and what you want that change to be. For me, we have to do the work to rebuild the trust in our district, in our board, in our superintendent, from the community. And that means going to the community, listening, doing the work, and I am willing to step up to do that.
Darla Higard.
All right. Thank you all again for coming tonight. I just want to close by reiterating how dedicated I am to ensuring that every student in this district gets a quality education or at least a chance for a quality education. I'm passionate about building an environment here where the students and the staff can thrive. My commitment to this board would be unwavering. I've got the time and the energy that I want to dedicate to serving you. Going on the unique train, I do think I have a very unique perspective as well that I can bring to the board. Two decades plus in the education technology industry is very different than from anyone else that's up here tonight. I can bring that new perspective and bring maybe something different that can help the board in the challenges that they're facing right now in the district, the challenges that they're facing. So I just want to conclude. Thank you again for coming tonight. And I look forward, hopefully, working with you all to making our schools the best possible places that they can be.
And Steve Schneider.
I really appreciate everybody coming tonight and those who are viewing us live to take their time out this evening to hear what we have to say and to meet four new people that they have to choose along with two existing people running for office. Twenty-seven years on the board, I've seen a lot of good times on the board. I've seen a lot of tough times on the board, tough decisions. I'm appreciative of the staff we have and the administrators we have and how they've led us to the point we are today, being fiscally sound. We've made a lot of changes over the years to be able to adjust to our changing population, to the changing challenges that we face, and to the new challenges that are going to be coming up for us in the near future and on into the future. I would more than welcome serving on the board four more years. I've enjoyed the last 27. I've served on the Minnesota State Service Board of Directors. I'm on the Southwest Regional Development Commission. I'm on the Regional Development Commission. I am active in my community. Always have been, and I probably always will be. I hope you find it in your hearts for everybody to at least go out and vote. And I hope you all vote for me. Thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes our District 518 School Board debate for 2024. As some of the candidates alluded to, four of the six will be selected. So get out and vote and do your diligence, talking to those folks. I want to thank again the Forward Committee, the Governance Committee that was involved, especially Jim and Zubi for timing and doing a great job. And Randy, thanks for being there with Cable 3 recording. With that, thank you all also for being here.